Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We begin with our prayer and pledge. If those that would like to bother had, please join me. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to serve the citizens of Saginaw. We ask you to be with us as we deliberate the city's business. We also ask you to be with those affected by the tragedy in L.A., be with all the responders, the families, those that are suffering physically and mentally. Give them some relief. Also, those that are suffering with continued flooding on the east coast. We ask you that in your name. Amen. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Milne.
Here.
Councilwoman Tibbs.
Present.
Councilwoman Bench.
Present.
Mayor Protem Clark is pre-excused.
Councilwoman Moore.
Right.
Councilman Bryant.
Present.
Councilman Balls.
Present.
Councilman Humphries.
Here.
And Mayor Browning.
Here.
Mayor, you have eight present and one absent.
And I'd like to remind the audience at this time to remain quiet and refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, or rude or obnoxious behaviors. This is the time to turn off your electronic devices to make sure that they do not interfere with our council meeting. And Madam Clerk, announcements?
We have one announcement this evening. The city's waste convenience station is open on the second Saturday of the month. City residents can dispose of items such as building materials and recycling for glass, plastic, and paper. The next service day will be this coming Saturday, October 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We have one proclamation on the agenda to the Saginaw Fire Department designating October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week.
And receiving that proclamation tonight will be Ralph Carter. Thank you.
Good evening.
Ralph, it's my pleasure, honored.
(Inaudible).
I'd like to have you give them to the clerk for me, please.
Thank you.
She'll take them. Thanks, Ralph. She'll pass them off.
This is Fire Prevention. Once again, the Saginaw Fire Department is getting prepared to get ourselves together to let everyone know that this is the time that we encourage everyone, the citizens of Saginaw, to just be a little more safe and be a little more aware of things they can do to make themselves more safe in their homes. This year's, our theme is "Every Second Counts." Always. Try to always have two ways out. That's something that we want to make sure, we encourage you, to make sure you go home and maybe have a fire drill and have a fire practice, your escape routes, and always have a meeting place once you get out of a house. If you need to get out, once you do get out, I've always have a couple of tips here that I've always wanted to share with you, if I may. Of course, create an escape plan. Practice that plan at least twice a week, I mean, twice a year, I'm sorry. If you want to practice twice a week, that's up to you, but twice a year at least would be good for you to be familiar with your plan. Draw a map of your home and use that map as a way of making sure that you know how to get out if there's a need to get out in an immediate situation. Always get low and go. If you wake up and your house is full of smoke and you have a smoke-filled environment, the lower you are, the better quality of air, you're able to breathe a little better, see a little better. Always try to make a point, get low, and go. Teach children the escape route if you cannot help them. Allow them to know a way to get out if it's, in case you're not able to help or that they're home alone. Show them the ways that they can do, what they need to do as far as for emergency escape plans that can help them. Make sure the address is clearly on your homes. If your address is not seen by fire or emergency personnel or emergency vehicles, it'll take a little longer, just like the, just as the, what this year's theme says, "Every Second Counts." I mean, seconds. Close doors behind you as you exit. By closing doors, you're eliminating smoke to spread, you're eliminating fire, you're confining the fire to one area if that's possible, only if it's safe to do that. If it's not safe, our main objective is to get out of the home and once you get out, of course, stay out. Never return back into a burning home for anything. If someone is still inside, just wait till the firefighters arrive, the fire department arrives, and you let them know that someone is still inside and the firefighters and the fire department and responders can go inside and begin to rescue. Of course, we all know tomorrow, Saginaw Fire Department will be, and will like to cordially invite each and every one of you to our Fire Safety and Fire Prevention and Fire Award Ceremony Open House that will be at 801 Federal Central Station at 10 o'clock. We would love to see each and every one of you, and I really encourage you, tomorrow we'll be having Fire Safety House presentations. I would encourage each and every one of you, whoever choose to attend, maybe come by and see how the Fire Safety House presentation actually goes. Thank you.
I would like to present this proclamation. Whereas the city of Saginaw is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, members of the Saginaw Fire Department are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, homes are the location where people are at the greatest risk for a fire. According to the National Fire Protection Association, 84 percent of the fires fatalities occur in one and two-family homes. Data shows that occupants have less than two minutes from the time a smoke alarm sounds to escape from a house fire. And whereas three out of five home fire deaths resulted from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. Statistics show that working smoke alarms cut the risk of death in home fires by 50 percent. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association has established Fire Prevention Week to create greater awareness and innovation in fire protection and prevention. As a result, countless lives have been saved each year. And whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts," planned two ways out effectively serves to remind us all of the importance of having home escape plans in the event of a fire. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dentist D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout the city of Saginaw, I urge all residents of this city to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2017 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the city of Saginaw's Fire Department. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the Saginaw, the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this ninth day of October in the year of our Lord, 2017. Signed, Dentist D. Browning, Mayor Floyd Clark, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphries, John Milne, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and City Manager Timothy Morales. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at personal appearances.
And to begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and input. When you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you are speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers have, will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk. So be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all our citizens, we ask you to be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV and to this council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to the city staff. Madam Clerk, our first public, our...
First speaker is Wayne Stover.
Hello, thanks for having me here. I'm Wayne Stover, 112 North Elm Street, Ithaca, Michigan. I'm the business agent for the Local Seven Sheet Metal Workers, which our union's called SMART, or Sheet Metal, Sheet Metal, Air Rail, and Transportation Union. We're skilled trades, and that's why I'm here today to explain that we have our local contractors in this area that are more than willing to do any kind of renovation work, any kind of repair work, any kind of construction work in the city of Saginaw that needs to be done. We have three contractors locally that are here. We have seven contractors that are signatory in the Saginaw area. They're not necessarily from Saginaw, but the employees that they use are from Saginaw area and the surrounding areas of Saginaw County and Bay. We do any kind of sheet metal work that is necessary. We do HVAC system, which AC Clough is probably one of your preferred contractors that you already use here. We do architectural metal. We do metal roofs, we do metal siding, we do industrial blowpipe like in the factories at GM. We do tons of their work. We have an apprenticeship program. It is a four-year program, and when our kids graduate from there, they're journeymen sheet metal workers. Most of them have welding certifications and other certifications that are needed. We, the, most of the kids that come into our program are 18 to 19 years old, fresh out of high school, or from the, like, Bay-Airneck Skill Center, the Saginaw Skill Center, kids that have learned a little bit of the building trades, you know, through the school systems. So we bring these kids in, we test them, and once they leave, you know, they get their four years in, they have a bachelor's degrees in mechanical science, they can take a few extra classes and actually get their associate's degree and everything else that's added to that. Most of the, like I say, most of the people we have are Saginaw residents or in the surrounding areas. We pay a great wage for our people, we have great benefits for them, and every person that comes out of there has the top skills that you can find, you know, out of any kind of a union skilled trade. So we have other contractors in other areas that are signatory with us on big projects that, you know, maybe some of our local contractors can't handle, but they're, like I say before, they have to use our people in this area. So they'll come in and bring a couple of theirs to supervise, but they, that keeps all the people in this area working and regenerating the money into the area for the community. We have safety programs for all of our kids. They have to go through O30. They have MUS programs that they have to, it's mandatory drug testing for all the plants and stuff like that. So we want to have a safe and a, an area where you can get a lot done and you don't have to worry about your workers, you know, you have a safe work environment, plus they have all the safety programs for climbing, you know, using harnesses and things like a fire safety. And another program that sheet metal workers are working on right now is called Fire Life Safety. And we're, it's been structured in Ohio, it's moving up to Lansing and Flint, and working its way this way. We have fire damper systems in most of your municipal buildings, hospitals, things like that, that the dampers aren't checked regularly. You crawl up and they physically check these. We have inspectors that are licensed to do this.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our second speaker is Vernie Kasab.
My name is Vernie Kasab, and my home address is 2899 Pheasant Ring Drive in Rochester Hills, Michigan, 48309. And I'm here today on behalf of Al and Nadia Investments LLC, who are my mother and father, and we're here today to address the brownfield plan for the property located at 620 South Washington Avenue. So we purchased this property, well, my parents purchased the property 15 years ago. At the time of the purchase, the cost of it was $1.5 million, and it's located where the 7-Eleven and mobile gas station are over here on South Washington. We purchased it from a company named Garpco. Garpco did, at the time, inherit from MMR, who owned the property previously before Garpco, the brownfield plan, and it was supposed, they were the end beneficiary of the brownfield plan. So I had, in the interim, we have been notified over the last year that Garpco, since purchasing from them in 2003, or 2001, 2003, I'm sorry, that they never provided any documentation to show what was done on the land as far as the brownfield plan. When we purchased the property, it was on a quick claim deed, it was a cash sale, and at the time, they did notify us of, that there was a brownfield plan, a tax plan, and that we might be able to take advantage of that. We were made aware of what's going on from the city of Saginaw in the last 12 months. I have reached out to the city attorney and to the director to see what our rights are and what we can do because Garpco has not been cooperative to provide any documentation to us. They provided a few things to us that were done on the property with the sale of the property when we purchased it. They had provided what they had invested, and we reimbursed them as part of the purchase price for that. So the reason that I'm here today is because we feel that, one, we love the city of Saginaw, we have invested a great amount of money over the last 15 years in this city. We have a few receipts that were provided from Garpco, but they have not been cooperative, and their attorney has not either. However, I'm here in front of council to ask what we can do so that us, as a company that bought it in 2001, are able to be the end beneficiary of any of the tax expenditure that we can then give to RLC, because it's a triple, and at least, that they will be able to take advantage of as well, because our intention eventually is to hopefully be able to invest in the surrounding area.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We are now at remarks of council.
And council members, a reminder, you have five-minute limit, and we begin with Councilwoman Annie Bench.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start with our public speakers. Thank you both for being here. Ms. Kasab, I'll probably save any comments I have for later on when the resolution is brought up, but thank you for being here. Mr. Stover, thank you as well for being here. It's great to hear from you and hear about the job opportunities that are available to our citizens and to our kids coming out of high school. That's what our citizens need, we need to be, you know, connecting them with the jobs that are out there that are looking for people, and there are jobs out there that are available. We just need that information trickling back to our citizens. And I would actually recommend trying to get in with the neighborhood associations and taking that information to them directly, because those are the individuals who, you know, will share that information with their neighbors and hopefully, you know, people they know who are looking for work. Mr. Martin, thank you for being here. Thank you for everything that you do. Thank you to our fire department for all the hard work that they put into prevention, not just during the week, you know, but all year round, and we're very fortunate to have the kind of department we have. So, thank you, and that's all I have.
All right. Then...
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the speakers for appearing today. Mr. Stover, I want to say thank you for your contribution to the city. We constantly say how we would like to keep and retain our young adults here in the city, and what you're doing by training the young adults is helping the city do that. So thank you for your contribution. Ms. Kasab, thank you for taking, this is about a two-hour trip here, or hour and a half, and our city has proven to be receptive to those who appear before city councils, so hopefully something fair can be worked out eventually. The fire department, I apologize, won't be able to make the award ceremony in open house tomorrow. I'll be in trial, but I want to thank the fire department for their service and to also congratulate any award recipients. You definitely have proven to be an asset to the city, and I just want to thank you for your, for your service. At this time, I also wanted to congratulate the Saginaw Public School District. Hanley Elementary received a national recognition, Blue Ribbon status is what it was called. They're designated a exemplary, high-performing school. They were one out of 342 schools nationally and one out of 13 schools in the state to receive this, this status. So I want to congratulate the Saginaw Public School District and as well as the parents and the kids for their hard work. Another way we can retain and attract residents is by providing an exceptional public school district, and this designation is proving to be moving in that direction. There's a couple of, well, there's one bill I wanted to make the residents aware of. It's a package of bill that addressed the opiate abuse. They recently passed a subcommittee at the state level. The reason why this is significant to the city, in my opinion, is that our police chief has constantly told us that much of our crime, including our homicides, are drug-related and opiate abuse addiction generally leads to addiction to other drugs such as heroin, which leads to crimes such as burglaries, car thefts, abusive relationships. So if we don't have the funds to, to increase our public safety, this is, I guess, a, an alternative way of addressing crime fighting. I think it's a, an abuse that, or excuse me, a bill that our residents should be aware of, and if you think that's something you should support, and it would be good for the city, because I believe it would, I encourage you to contact our state representative and our state senator in support of the bill. My last comment, I guess I bring, I come bearing gifts as well. I believe recently we talked about having some type of ordinance that addressed some of the party stores in our city, considering some of the recent crime that has happened at a few of the locations. I just brought a quick summary of selected laws for, for such stores that is a summary from other states. I just wanted to point out number 31, which gave a couple of examples as to what other states may be doing, such as removing litter, litter daily from the premises, adjacent sidewalks, parking lots that are under control. And we have had residents come to city council and raise this issue as far as have no more than 33 percent of windows covered with advertising or signs. We also had, I believe, a resident talked about some of the adult material that are at these venues, as well as curbing the number of such establishments we have in the city, similar to what they have in the city of Kalamazoo. So I guess I just wanted to pass that along to the city manager as well as council members for their review. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention a couple things this evening. In conjunction with the fire department's open house tomorrow, it will be the first major opportunity to view our newest piece of fire apparatus. Engine One is based at the central fire station, and I think you'll be very happy at what you see there. It is a fine piece of equipment to add to our inventory. Couple of local developments, some of our redevelopments downtown are splashier and make the news a little more. These are a little more low-key, I thought I'd pass along. In the area of the old Baptist Church on Jefferson Avenue, Health Delivery Services has had the old rectory demolished, and they're going to be adding a dental clinic to their property there. And people may have seen Beer Line demolition handling, the demo portion of it, and the construction will be following soon. Another small but important development, the old Bushy Glass property on Baum Street is being remodeled by Shaheen Development for additional space for Spicer Engineering. Another small project, but it adds to what's going on in downtown Saginaw. And lastly, I thought I'd pull one item out of the police department's newsletter this month. The October Officer of the Month. Officer Graves, Philip Graves, was cited for assisting in solving a B&amp;E problem at a local area store due to some diligent, one of those boring police jobs, you don't hear a lot about watching the surveillance footage from a store and recognizing an individual and while monitoring that store, saw the individual come back with some buddies, and they were arrested in the act of breaking into that store again. So just the police department doing those little behind-the-scenes things that we don't always hear about, wanted to put that out there. And that's all this evening.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Houghton Jones Neighborhood Association on celebrating 25 years of existence. I had the great pleasure of attending a luncheon on Friday. It was amazing to me, the number of people who spoke, who talked about growing up in that neighborhood, going on and doing other things, and either returning to the neighborhood or simply staying in the neighborhood. I believe it is the oldest neighborhood association in the city. I think it's the only one that's, that's incorporated as a nonprofit. They've done some remarkable things there, so I congratulate them on 25 years and hope that they will continue the good work for at least another 25. Sort of piggybacking on what Councilman Tibbs said, October is National Substance Abuse Prevention Month. October seems to be a month for a whole lot of different things, and so on occasion, things get lost. Delta College is actively involved in trying to combat the opioid crisis, and crisis is the appropriate word for it. There are 144 people who die every day in the United States from opioid addiction. Delta has a screening of Stigmatic, our opioid crisis, which is apparently the fest best winner from the Hell's Half Mile Film Festival. They'll be screening The Chasing the Dragon, The Life of the Opioid Addict, that was produced by a number of law enforcement agencies. And then they have various other activities that are going on. If you are interested, I'm sure that you could contact the Delta College Counseling and Advising Department, or Laurie Zilkowski, an assistant professor of management at Delta College. The last thing I think I want to finish with is congratulations to my fellow councilman, Clint Bryant, on his new employment. And pretty exciting, he's apparently going to be spending some time back and forth to Lansing, and we're looking forward to those trips full of bacon, to be bringing back to the, to the city for us. Thank you, Clint.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the citizens for coming to the city council meeting today and for all the people that's watching the city council meeting in the city of Saginaw. I thank you for viewing it, too. First of all, I'd like to thank Wayne Stover for bringing a presentation about the sheet metal workers. It's always good to see that the union people are coming here letting you know there are some jobs available for people who would like to make a good wage and go to school for a couple of years. It's a wonderful thing, and thank you, Angie, for being part of that. I'd like to thank the mayor, too, for saying something about the people in Las Vegas over the weekend. I just happened to be there when the guy was shooting up the place, and it, it, it put a somber mode on the time when I was there. I have a relative that was working the crowd, and she ran all the way to the airport to get out of harm's way, but she's still shucking up. I had the opportunity to speak to her last Thursday when I was there in Las Vegas, and I'm telling you, man, my heart go out to those people who had to suffer the consequences of a guy doing what he did. So we do need to pray for those people there, because they really do need it. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. Ms. Kasab, did I say that right? Kasab. I'm sure the city's going to get back with you and let you know what they're going to do about that. I personally think anybody want to come here and invest that kind of money in the city of Saginaw, that we have to do all we can do to make sure that they get in their bank for their buck, so we can make some more, do some more business in the city of Saginaw, because we definitely need it. Because when you bring business, you bring jobs, you bring jobs, you bring hope, you bring hope. Hopefully that stops people from using alcohol and drugs, too. Hopefully that stops people from using alcohol and drugs too. So I'd like to thank you for that too. Mr. Martin, I thank you too for bringing a presentation for the fire department. Uh, I got a day job, I won't be able to make that tomorrow, so, um, I hope you guys have a good presentation. So I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And thank you to everybody who's joining us here this evening in council chambers and those who are watching at home. Uh, thank you to our public speakers, Mr. Stover. Oh, there you go, I missed that. I just wanted to say thank you so much for letting us know about the apprenticeship program, the other great things, uh, that your association is doing. I'm a proud union member, um, myself, and it's great to always to hear what we do in the community, its long-lasting impact. So thank you for that. Uh, Ms. Kasad, I'm sure that some city officials will be reaching out to you, uh, soon. Just an update, uh, piggyback on some of my council members, congratulations to Houghton Jones. I had the opportunity to join, uh, with the association. I know it was ticket number one ninety-five, so they had a packed house. Uh, and it was great to see so many people in that neighborhood and my fellow councilwoman from that neighborhood, Councilwoman Brenda Moore, she was able to represent us in giving a proclamation to the association. She did a fantastic job, so thank you, Brenda, for that. Also, I had the privilege to, uh, along with Councilman Humphreys, attend at the Castle Museum this evening, an update on Delta College, not too much new, but it was great to hear the timeline. And every time we hear that presentation, it's exciting because it's going to bring so much to our community and they're anticipating, uh, twelve-hundred students for that. Firefighter Ralph Martin, Fire Marshal Ralph Martin, uh, great to see you at Houghton Jones. And also yesterday, if you guys don't know, uh, Fire Marshal also is a singer. And I had the opportunity to hear him not only at Houghton, I gotta put you out there, you put it out there. Uh, at Houghton Jones, he, uh, dropped a note for us. And then yesterday, uh, I had the privilege to attend Bethel AME to welcome their new pastor, Dennis LaFune. And, uh, I could hear a Fire Marshal from, from the choir, so he did a fantastic job. Finally, I just wanted to let all my colleagues know that I will be participating in Saginaw's Most Stylish for the United Way. It's not necessarily that I am the most stylish, but a willing participant, uh, to, to dress up to raise some funds. As you know, the third grade, um, uh, requirement for literacy has changed, so I will be the singing lumberjack at that event on the twenty-fifth. So that is something you are not going to want to miss. But aside from that, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody here and I'd like to thank our presenters, our public speakers. Mr. Stover, as always, I'm always excited to see labor come in and union people work together. I know I'm going to mess your name up, young lady, 'cause...
You're not.
Okay. Uh, I'm sure that the manager will get back with you, um, and if, and if he doesn't, just come back again. Just keep coming back till you get an answer, okay? Uh, but I'm sure that someone will be getting back with you shortly to give you some information. Uh, I want to echo on with, uh, Councilman Tibbs. They're normally good at that because they know that if we don't, if you don't come back, then we know you, you got an answer. If you come back, then we know that you didn't get an answer. On Friday, I had the opportunity to celebrate with Houghton Jones. That is my neighborhood. Twenty-five years. The speaker was dynamic. It was Hazel Wilson, the founder. She left Saginaw going to take care of her parents. Didn't realize she was going to speak at the event, but she did an excellent position, uh, excellent, an excellent presentation. Fire Marshal Martin, you know, he was, he just opened up the show with singing. He came down with the theme song singing, so we'd like to thank you for that. I'd also like to thank you for your service and the fire department. You know, kudos always goes to the fire departments and, and the police officers. But we know that you're going through a struggle right now and kudos go to you for the Fire Prevention Month. On Saturday, I did represent the city on Friday. On Saturday, I get another opportunity to go to the South Seventeenth Church at the Horizon to represent, to again, stand there for the mayor, to represent them on their years of service in the city. Saturday is also the Walk for Breast Cancer. If you're not involved, please call the Cancer Foundation and please come out and walk. We're wearing pink and we want to make this a big gala event, so we want to have our pink on representing Breast Cancer Month for this month, okay? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I certainly want to thank all the, those that have appeared tonight to, uh, it's important to hear from you, so, uh, very, uh, very important, so glad to hear from that. Also want to, uh, recognize Houghton Jones for their twenty-five years, uh, here in the city of Saginaw as an association and, uh, the oldest, uh, organized neighborhood group that we have in the city of Saginaw. Did present or attend the Delta College, uh, presentation and, uh, the first one I went to, mostly college professors were there. Many of them, some of them never been in the city of Saginaw before and, uh, and to be downtown. And so, uh, they asked me to say a few words and it was a good thing that Mr. Miller was alongside me also. We kind of tag teamed them. But I, I remember the president sitting in the front row and I cautioned the, the professors that they need to be very careful if they have a class teaching downtown on a Friday night during the summer. They ought not let their students go outside. Now, as soon as I said that, you can imagine the look on the face of the president of the college. I says, because once the students get outside and they smell the barbecue and they hear the music from Friday Night Live, chance of them going back in class is pretty slim. So class in the afternoon, evenings could be pretty slim because there's so much, so much happening in the city of Saginaw. And we're so excited about that with Huntington Park and different events going on. So it was, uh, very, very enlightening to see that, so. I do want to acknowledge, uh, with us tonight, uh, former mayor, uh, Wilmer Ham, Jones McZee, very nice, thank you for, uh, attending tonight. And I, 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 I do want to, thank you. And I want, I want to acknowledge, uh, not that he's old, but one of my former sergeants, Pastor Don Dinniger, is joining us tonight. So thank you, Don, for being here and, uh, many years on the police department and now continuing serving, uh, our community. And so I want to acknowledge both of you's, uh, being here tonight. So with that, Madam Clerk?
Next item on the agenda is the reports from manager.
Items before we get to our presentation, I first wanted to mention that the, um, MBS Airport had our strategy, our strategic planning session last week. And I don't know how familiar everyone is with the airport, but it is owned by, uh, City of Saginaw, Bay County, and the City of Midland. The mayor and I are both on the, the MBS Board as is, um, former mayor Greg Branch is the citizen representative. But there, there is a lot going on there and one of the biggest, um, parts of discussion was the, uh, old terminal at the airport. The old terminal is slated for demolition and we have selected a contractor, so that will be, uh, potential for, um, some new development at the airport and the, and within Saginaw County. So, um, if you have any ideas or thoughts about that, I know we, we talked about marketing that property and they've been working with, uh, Saginaw Future and Midland Tomorrow and Bay Future on that. So always feel free to talk to me about any ideas you have or the mayor as well for the airport and we can always bring that back to the commission. The, um, mayor mentioned, uh, Delta College, the information sessions they've been having. And we do have an item on the agenda tonight regarding Baum Street. I'll say that Delta College does have a great plan for that property there. Uh, will really enhance their downtown campus and I would also, uh, thank the representatives from Delta College, Larry Ramsayer and Pam Clark here tonight. They didn't necessarily need to be, but they've been very involved in the project and very active, so I thank them for, for all of their, uh, commitment to the downtown center. We did, uh, councilman, uh, mentioned the Police Officer of the Month, Officer Graves, and the department also selects a civilian Employee of the Month. This month, I, I thought I'd mention it's Valley Gin, who's worked for the city for several years in, in a couple of different departments, but, um, Chief had, uh, singled her out for her work and, and working with impounds and abandoned vehicles, for one thing. And I know the mayor's familiar, that used to be a job that officers did. And with the, uh, reduction in the force, a lot of the civilian staff has taken that on. So she's been working with that, which, uh, creates revenue at the police department. She's also, um, worked on the Uniform Distribution System, which has helped save the department money and also, um, has been coordinating firearm sales. And that's something that I think we had, uh, Chief can probably back me up, but we had not done firearm sales for several years and Chief Leip, I think initially started doing those. Um, we worked with Fiscal Services and one of our former, uh, our former Deputy Treasurer started working with them on that, but they've taken over those sales and, um, those funds have been used to purchase some of the new police cars you've seen. So I think that, um, that use of civilian force that they've been doing there has been pretty beneficial in their, uh, management and, and doing some new things at the police department. So I wanted to mention, uh, Ms. Gin there as well. I also provided you with a article from Word Up Community Magazine. I thought I'd mention that our intern in the manager's office, Dan Wonderlick, is in, is featured in that article, uh, from the September edition. Dan was named a twenty-seventeen recipient of the Media Fellow Scholarship, which is provided by the Media Scholars Foundation. It's only awarded to sixty undergraduate students nationwide who are passionate about communications in the field of public policy. So Dan worked for, uh, Congressman over the summer in, uh, in Washington DC and interviewed here with us before he went to that, um, that internship with Representative Trott. And he was very excited about that. And that's a program that we've been doing with Saginaw Valley State University, the intern program in our office for a couple of years now. Debbie Powell initiated that and Vicki's going to keep working on that. But, um, we also utilize a lot of Saginaw Valley State University interns in office of management and budget, to assist with the budget and financial planning and also for crime, uh, mapping and analysis. So I thought I'd mention some of those things and some of, uh, another partnership that we've developed over the past few years with, uh, Saginaw Valley State University. And, um, I would thank Fire Marshal Ralph Martin too. He's been, um, very instrumental in making suggestions here at City Hall for fire safety, which is very important. As you know, the previous City Hall, uh, did, was the scene of a fire, so, um, Ralph's been working with facilities for the past, uh, year or so in, uh, making recommendations for things that we can do here to improve fire safety. And he also coordinated, I think, our first, um, fire, uh, fire drill that we've had here in a number of years. Uh, we did that last year, so I think, thank Ralph for his help with doing that. And, um, finally, I mentioned, we do have the item on the, um, that brownfield plan. So, um, as you know, we currently approve brownfield plans and the city's been doing that for years, but I would, uh, commend, um, Ms. Jones and Lori Brown and our Controller's Office and the city attorney have been working on these because in the past, um, there may not have been a lot of follow-up done on these. So this is, um, actually closing this brownfield out. So if you're aware from the more recent brownfields we've done, those plans have requirements. You're, you're giving a tax abatement for work being done and it specifically spells out in that plan what work must be done. So we require, uh, the developer to provide proof that the work was done and that's when we, uh, compensate them for the, the tax that's been captured. So essentially, we're collecting the taxes and not providing it back to the other local units to pay for this, this type of a project. In a number of these cases, we did not receive the, um, proof back that the work was done. So i- in those cases, you can't compensate a company for work that you are not sure, cannot prove that's been done. Um, Ms. Jones started this project, uh, quite some time ago and they've been going through with several of these that were approved ten, fifteen years ago or more. So going back with the companies trying to get proof that work was done. Some of the companies have been able to produce the receipts for the work, um, some of the, it doesn't always equate back to the total that was collected, but, um, they've been doing a really good job with it and working directly with the companies. So, um, I know that, uh, that the city attorney and, and Ms. Jones has communicated with all these companies, so, um, I don't, I don't have a concern about any lack of communication there because I know they've been, um, going back and forth with a number of these. And also, um, Tom Miller in Saginaw Future has assisted on some of them in, in working with the company. So it is something they've been working on and been pretty committed to for some time. And with that, um, I'll ask Chief Finley, do you...
Yes, sir. What's, um, happening with that, uh, the red house? I know we, uh, delayed so long last year, but it seemed like we've been overlapped about a year now, so I just want to know, curious what's going on.
No, what I wanted to ask was that question. That house, uh, is, is no longer listed, so, um, I had talked to, um, the mayor Protem about it and it does, uh, require action on my part because, uh, council approved the demolition and then, um, approved sort of, um, not a moratorium, but a delay in demolition based upon it being, um, listed. So at this point, um, the listing has run out. I didn't, I didn't, um, re-up the list with the, um, real estate agent because it's beyond the period of what council intended. Um, so we're at a point though, we do have an individual who has said that they are interested in the home, however, um, that communication, uh, we've provided a development agreement and, and I have not heard any specifics back on that. Uh, Mr. Stempel did meet with that individual a few weeks ago and, um, he seemed interested, but I don't believe that, um, that John has heard anything back from him since that meeting either. The, I don't know if you may have heard this, Councilman, but the land bank did have a discussion about the house at their meeting, um, so they could have some interest in it, but we're at a point where, um, if it is, uh, I think during this fiscal year, something would be, should be done with the house, whether we go back to the original, uh, original order for demolition that, uh, council passed, I think we need to make that decision in the next month or so. And I would, may recommend another couple of weeks for this individual who's interested in it to give us an actual offer or response, but, um, I'm not sure what will come of that.
Just want to know where we was. I mean, because this, this study said nobody's, I don't think anybody really interested in this. I can't imagine the cost of fixing up that house. Thank you.
From the manager at this point, being done? Okay. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Browning, Council, City Manager Morales. I'm here tonight to speak on plans for Saginaw Fire Department. Uh, as you're all aware, uh, we are not receiving funding in an upcoming SAFER program, so, um, that's going to force us to make some changes, given the resources we have available. So I'd like to, um, kind of, uh, walk you through, uh, back, you know, where we're at now, what we're going to look like and, uh, explain the process as to how we got to that point. So before you see the first step is our authorized complement, uh, currently. And you see it's a fifty-one and there's a breakdown of, uh, how our personnel are distributed. Below that shows what our complement will be as of February first, two thousand and eighteen. That's at the expiration of the current SAFER grant that we do have an extension on. Our current operation, we have four fire stations. Uh, you see the addresses, we have the federal station, Grashit, Hess, and State Street. Those are all very strategically located, four quadrants of the city. Each station has three personnel, um, assigned to it. Each station has three personnel assigned to it on a daily basis, each shift. You have three personnel each day working at the station, and with the exception of headquarters, which is our federal station, it has a battalion chief that is also assigned to run out of that station. So what that gives you is a full strength of 13 firefighters per day at any fire incident. Just to keep in mind, when we talk about responding to fire incidents, we go to a structured fire, we respond to the whole department. We have nobody to hold back, so we do send all personnel. So when you hear me referencing later on in the presentation, I'll talk about fire management areas and how the city is divided up. Each fire management area has a fire station in it, and when I talk about fire totals, that's the physical location of what part of the city it occurred in, and I can walk you through that as we go, but just understand that all of our resources go to a structured fire call. So three organizations involve closing a fire station, and that fire station is going to be our station number three at 1602 Hess. You'll see on the slide what that does for our staffing. That brings us down from 13 a day, 24 hours, that brings us down to 10 on duty, and that's three individuals at each station with the battalion chief coming out of headquarters. One thing to keep in mind is with our personnel down at headquarters, we're staffing two apparatus with three individuals. We are doing what was called cross-staffing, so depending on the type of nature of the call, we'll either send our aerial ladder or they'll operate our engine, so we're not able to roll both pieces at the same time. Next slide shows you what our staffing of our apparatus looks like. It's pretty straightforward. We have an officer, an engineer, driver, operator, and then we have a firefighter. Show you how our current personnel are divided out. Currently, we have 51, and it gives you a breakdown as to how they're broken out by the shifts. What I'll mention is that the jump crew, you see there, it's a two-person crew that bounces from shift to shift to give relief to our firefighters if they're exceeding FLSA's hours within a cycle. So there's a 28-day cycle. I don't want to go into too much detail, but it's pretty complicated. We have the Kelly crew that bounces around and reduces the overtime exposure for the city. We do currently have one extra personnel on our B shift, and that person's assigned there. We chose that shift because we have higher numbers of military personnel there, and military personnel, you know, we release them, but it counts against our complement, so we need to try to upstaff on that shift. So next slide shows you what our staffing and our shifts will look like after the, after changes. That'll be 11 personnel assigned to each shift with a two-person Kelly crew or jump Something to point out is that our minimum staffing for the days, as I showed in an earlier slide, would be 10 on duty per day, so that gives us a cushion of one personnel to cover all of our leaves. So we're working on that. It's very lean, it's very, very lean structure, but, you know, it's what we have to do. So, you know, as I mentioned, we were talking about closing a fire station. You know, this is not a decision that comes lightly. We spent an awful lot of time planning and discussing different options, and unfortunately, this becomes our best option at the time. There is no one good fire station to close that's not cut and dry. You know, you never like to close a fire station, but unfortunately, given the circumstances, this is something that we're going to have to do. Spending a great deal of time analyzing call volume, incident distribution, response routes, critical infrastructure, and the ultimate, the impact on the community. The one thing you'll note, and I'll show in some other slides here, that our fire distribution in the city is very equally distributed. It's surprising when you get to some of the numbers just how well distributed. So when I say that, we don't have any pockets, we don't have, one side is more than the other, or one quadrant more than the other. They're all very, very equally distributed. And again, the decision is not made just basically on fire activity or call volume. There's a number of factors that went into this. Some of the factors involve incident type, volume, distribution, response routes, population density, population shifts, high-density, high-hazard occupancies, and when we're talking as high schools, hospitals, and high-rises. Critical infrastructure in the city, which we have a lot of it as the seat of the county, we have a lot running through the city, through communications, power distribution, and so forth, so that's something we certainly had to consider. Our mutual aid and automatic aid agreements. And finally, we looked at a concentration of demolitions and unoccupied homes. I spoke a few minutes ago about our distribution of fires. I think this slide represents that. Now, this is through October 1st, so it's the first three quarters of the year, the first quarter of the fiscal year, and you'll see how, just how equally these structured fire incidents are distributed in the city. Next slide shows our activity per station. Again, this is broken down just to show you the geography and where the higher concentrations of fires occur, and you'll see are some trends here, but as we're getting into a pattern, where things have equaled out quite significantly. We've seen Station 1, which is our headquarters, used to have quite a high activity, and I think later on in the slide, you'll see that I'm going to show you, is that we've seen some of that activity shift a little bit. But as of, you know, October 1st, you can see just how equal they are, and just to note that, last year, we had 118 structured fires at the end of the year, we're at 107 at this point in the year. So we're seeing a trend upward. In this year, the overall cycle seems to be down nationally also, but just so you're aware, we are seeing a little increased activity this year. So the next slide shows your structured fire activity for 2016, and it goes back to the distribution that I mentioned earlier. You know, you don't see one particular pocket or one area that shows any significant change. It's very well distributed out. To show you, the next slide here will show you a little better picture, and it gives you an idea on distribution. Again, that's a five-year snapshot of structured fire activity, and I can tell you, that's uncommon to see that. I've met with many chiefs from across the country, been out to the academy, and we talk about modeling and things, and I've seen few models that look quite as, quite as this one does. Usually, you'll see pockets of areas, but this is very, very well distributed. So some of the criteria we looked at, again, I talked about demolitions. So this shows five years, the demolitions that have occurred, and the areas that they have occurred in. You'll see the little black landmarks in the downtown area. Those all represent buildings three stories and above, scattered throughout the city. So those are, those are critical things that we look at, are high-rises or any buildings above three stories. So now we're looking at population density as our next map, and I think you, you know, by looking at the map, you see our station locations, and you see where the density of populations are occurring. Station 3 is the station that is planned to be closed, and that is down in the southeast corner of the city, down off of Hess, and you can see the distribution in that area. Another factor we looked at is we tried to forecast, you know, try to look where things are going, where they've been, where they're going. Population loss was something we certainly looked at, and we've seen a trend in the population shifting in the city. Not to say that this remains constant, but this is just another piece of information that we use to see where our populations will be, you know, down the road. I think things seem to be stabilized and leveled out, but this just kind of shows you there was a big shift here, so. So the next slide shows you our current stations and the fire management areas that we have established now. When I talk about fire management areas, again, all stations go wherever the fire is located. Fire management areas are typically, we use this to divide out our other non-mergent-type calls or smaller fire-type calls. If we can send a one single response to it, one unit, they cover the fire management area that they're assigned, but any major significant events require obviously all of our personnel. So that's our current setup, and this is how we've redrawn the borders to try to lessen the impact. You know, we're going from a four-station model to a three-station model, so some of this has to be absorbed, and primarily, Fire Management Area 1, Fire Management Area 2 are doing the absorbing. They are converging to cover Fire Management 3, what used to be Fire Management 3. So I talked about some of the strategies that we've implemented or have been doing to try to minimize the impact on the community. We'll do all that we can with the resources available to us to limit the impact on the community, first and foremost. We're going to continue our aggressive fire education program and inspection programs and reduce the occurrence of fire incidents. We've done a tremendous job in the last few years with our home fire inspections, the smoke alarm program. That allows us into homes to meet with residents. We're out at every neighborhood meeting. We're out and about more than ever, and the purpose is that, not only to build a relationship with the community, but to provide education. You know, we have a significant fire issue in the city, you know, and residential structured fires is it. So we have to target that, we target that aggressively, and so we're going to continue with those efforts. We partner with the Michigan State Police. We will continue to pursue and prosecute those individuals responsible for arson fires. We have a great partnership going right now. We have a Michigan State Police Specialist Trooper assigned for fire investigations in the city. With him, he brings a ton of resources that are really valuable and have really been beneficial. So we're going to continue that partnership, and we have a very good working relationship with the MSP. We'll continue to maximize utilization of our fire personnel. We do squeeze everything we can out of the personnel we have, I assure you of that. Our operating strength is lean, about 92% of our personnel are actively engaged in firefighting. If you throw me into that, that number goes up a little bit, and I'm willing to do that. My training officer and Fire Marshal are also on scene, so those numbers are not reflecting there, but those are really the three individuals that are not actively involved in firefighting. We've implemented new technologies that have refined our callback procedures and provided a more timely and efficient recall of off-duty firefighters. You know, we implemented this a year back, understanding that this is going to become a more important factor, a more important part of our operation. We needed to find ways to improve the recall process and provide our incident commanders the best information available to them to make good decisions in the field. So we do have, we've included, incorporated a lot of technology to help us. We have established mutual aid agreements with all of our neighboring fire departments, and we have formed strong relationships with them, joint training activities, and greater pre-incident interaction. We have made a strong effort over the last three years, three or four years, of interacting with our neighboring fire departments, much greater. We've initiated what we call joint training operations, so we train with a neighboring department every quarter. You know, it's been my mission to really keep pushing this and keep this thing going. Things like this can fall off the table, so we've really been taking the lead on this, and it's built some great relationships, and it allows our personnel and their personnel to get to know each other before the incident, so break down some of those walls. So I think that's a real positive step that we've made, and we will continue to work on development of automatic aid agreements with our neighboring fire departments, continually working and talking with other fire chiefs in our area to try to establish some type of automatic aid agreements. Automatic aid differs from mutual aid in that that company or that community's resources are sent immediately versus waiting for us to call and ask for help. So you can build in these things within an automatic aid agreement to help bolster resources for both sides. It should be a mutually beneficial agreement, so I continue to work on that, and I think that's going to be a positive step for us as we move along. Finally, the Saginaw Fire Department will continue to provide the city of Saginaw the very best fire protection possible with the resources we have available. That falls in line with our mission statement, and that is our commitment. Any questions?
I got to know, people didn't want to get the grant from me, they say why we didn't get the grant to sign.
The information we got is that the grant was good and better than average, I believe is the terminology, but they don't tell you specifics. Now, one thing I will say is that working with some of our political friends, particularly Kildee's office, we are going to have a, we're setting up a conference call with FEMA. They're going to go over our grant with us, which is not something that they would ordinarily do, so I'm encouraged to hear that, and we'll find out if there are any areas that we could have improved in on there, but I feel very strong about the grant itself. I think the grant was very well done. Again, it's one of those, you know, as I talked to you earlier on in the year, that this grant had changed, and I think that's what we saw here. I kept tabs on other departments that had applied for grants similar to ours, and we all had the same result.
Do you know, now, if the appropriation money normally goes to the fire departments for the SAFER grants in the country, do they go down?
No, actually, I believe it was, there was a little bit of a bump made to it. I think Congressman Kildee was able to get another 20 million to it, so. So the funding was there, and I don't see any indications that funding is going to significantly decrease in upcoming years.
So is anybody that we could write to help, see if we can talk to about getting that grant back here in Saginaw?
You know, I would say all of our, all of our elected officials at the federal and state level have been outstanding, helping us out. Congressman Kildee's office has been great, Stabinoff, Peters, they've been fantastic, even up to the local level with McGarrett and Horns. So, you know, Congressman Kildee has really been a big ally of ours, and in this last cycle, he kind of worked as a conduit for getting information to FEMA, so. Thank you.
Sure.
Another question, Tom Miller? I mean, Chief Fanlu. Couple of questions. Under the current SAFER grant, the firefighters and personnel we have there, are they all engineers and firefighters?
They are all firefighters, with the exception of two individuals who have been promoted up to engineer in a two-year period.
Also, you mentioned you've worked on a system for recalled firefighters. Does a recalled firefighter go directly to an incident? Do they carry extra gear with them?
No, our procedures are set up, because we're all stationed outside, right? So the procedure is to get their gear and report to Station 1, which is our headquarters. That's our staging point. There are times where we may have them pick up a piece of apparatus at an outside station and go right to a scene. That would be unusual, but, you know, we do get a very good response from our recalled firefighters, so.
Offhand on the personnel funded through the SAFER grant, can you recall an average cost per personnel, call it an all-up cost, including whatever fringes and stuff is involved?
Well, you know, I mean, the, they're starting, you know, their starting annual is about $34,000, and then you have the benefits on top of that, and maybe the office budget could give you a little more detail on it, but I mean, it's, for last fiscal year, we were just under $800,000 for the 13 in our SAFER funding, so.
For a full year?
That was for fiscal, fiscal '16, yeah.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Tib?
Chief, I just want to say, thank you.
Chief, I just want to say thank you. Tough news, but thank you for the presentation. You know, anytime there's a decrease in public safety, it raises a level of concern, but your presentation, I just put out, it appeared to be thought out, took some time to develop, use of statistics and forecasting, and I appreciate that. In your presentation, you talked about minimizing impact on the community and using resources when you can. I guess I was curious to know, and I don't know if you'd be able to answer this now, I believe several of the newer officers, if not all the officers, have been, you know, trained to assist in certain incidents. I guess I was kind of curious to know how, you know, how would that work out? I mean, since the police department has already strained, so.
That would be a cross-staff in our public safety model, and there's some contractual issues involved that would have to be discussed. I personally don't believe that that model works or would work for the city of Saginaw. I think a public safety model is effective in some communities, a bedroom community or a community that has lower instances of both police and fire. But in a city of size, the city of Saginaw, and the instances that we're seeing, I don't believe that type of model is necessarily the direction I would recommend.
Well, I mean, I guess I wasn't asking like a shift in how we pursue it, like a public safety, but I just knew, I just thought that some of the officers were trained to assist to an extent. I mean, you guys definitely are a lead in that, so I didn't know how that would pan out or work out.
Well, just because they may have a firefighter certification, it's just not that easy. You know, we train continuously. There are certain elements that just because you have a certification doesn't qualify you to do the job.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
And Lou and I have talked about it, and I don't think at this time that, you know, that's a direction that we're necessarily looking at. And I'll commend Chief Van Lou and the command staff at the fire department, because this isn't something that's easy to recommend, you know, something like this or to deal with, but Chief has been really working on this since he became chief, because if you recall, this grant we've had for four years. So, you know, that, that could be a factor, and, you know, if you get it another year too, because we've gotten two consecutive grant terms for this grant, so it's something that they've been thinking about and planning for. And over the last probably seven, eight months, they've finalized, you know, how they can do their shifts and what stations they, they should look at. And I know it's, you know, it's not an easy thing to do. Chief's done a good job with it, but we have talked about that public safety type model, and it's just, at this point, it's not something that we're pursuing. And Chief is correct that it would be, you know, it's not just, it's not just, you know, these individuals will respond to fires too. There is a lot of, there are a lot of other contractual issues there, and it's not, you have to negotiate a lot of different factors, so. And it would probably, there'd probably be some initial startup cost too. I know it was pretty significant in Bay City when they did it. But I think, you know, Chief and his command staff have developed something that will work. They've been, another thing that they've been doing is they have been working with the surrounding communities, maybe not, maybe it hasn't been as accepted as well as we'd like, but they've been very persistent in trying to work with the other communities and doing some new things, and they have been successful, I think, in a lot of the training activities that they've been doing with other communities. So I know that they'll continue to work on that, and it might be a way to get more cooperation from other communities with the city, but also us going out to assist them too. I think we do have an advantage here, because, you know, we have a full-time fire department, and they're very well-trained, they have more experience than most of the other departments combined, and I think you could see that when, when we were interviewing Chiefs, just Chief Van Lou's fire command experience compared to other applicants that were from other departments is a phenomenal amount, so I think we can offer a lot to the other communities, so that's something that Chief's been working on too. So they've been, they've been working very hard on this.
And I know this is a difficult time for you guys, and I just want to say thank you so much, because you're involved in our neighborhoods, and our community is unparalleled. So just thank you so much. I know this is a difficult time, just want to encourage you guys, okay? Thank you.
I have a question. Do firefighters go to a fire marshal or something like that? Do they just train on the job?
Over the last few years, we've taken it in-house, and we use, again, we're using our personnel. We have a training officer, a full-time training officer. We utilize that person to run our new recruits, those that need the academy. We run through an academy in-house, and then we send them out, we get them certified. So we've saved a lot of costs by doing that and doing it in-house. We've actually been able to bring in firefighters from outside our department to train them for a fee. So it's, it really has a lot of upside.
Okay, I was thinking, we got to close fire department.
Pardon me?
I was thinking about to close fire department, house that we have, maybe we can turn that into a training school to get some people in.
Well, I have some plans in mind for some training, training options here involving our training tower. I've been working on for quite a while here, and I'd really like to see some movement on that, so stay tuned. I think you'll see something really nice.
Okay. Thank you.
I see what you on 911 for, and I know that you do a bunch of stuff outside of the city of Saginaw with our firefighters. I too like to echo. I hope that we can find some resolution. I mean, you started when we started, or when I started, and so we've been skating through this every year or close to every year. It's not an easy decision, and I know it's not, because when I got the email, I'm like, oh my God, we're going to close down two stations, people, houses going to burn, what are we going to do? You know, but I, I like the idea of three stations. I don't like the idea of losing 13 people, but, you know, I know, I know that that was a real tough decision. I know it was. So I'd like to thank all the firefighters and yourself for taking out and coming together to come up with a plan until we can get better, because we're going to look for better, we're going to always look to get better. So I just want to thank the whole department for all that they do.
We have a number of firefighters that are eligible right now, some of our senior folks. How many? I believe the number's about six or seven right now. Yep. What we're seeing now, though, is our younger, safer folks, now that we know we're not getting a grant, we're seeing some folks leave, resigning. So we're kind of struggling with it. You know, we have the grant through January, but we're also down some personnel right now.
And those are probably the people that don't stay in our area anyway?
Some of them are from the area.
Okay. Thank you.
In the past, I've seen you in action in public, and I can hear a certain amount of pain in your voice. And I too will commend you on the homework you've done and the hard work that has gone into this. I have to believe there's a degree of lower morale in the fire department on the heels of not getting this grant. Having participated to a certain extent in two fire ops now, I understand much, much better what the job of a firefighter is, and it's so much more than just hopping in a fire truck and spraying some water on a fire. So please extend to each and every one of the individuals in your department how much we do appreciate what they do. I think that, that, I'm guilty of believing we were going to get that grant and that everything was going to be okay, at least until the next time around. I think that now it falls back on our shoulders as council and on administration to figure out what can we do about it. And I would like to hear from our citizens on what they might be willing to support, because the long and the short of it is, this is all about money and what we can do with what we have. The city has been phenomenally supportive in the past of public safety millages and campaigns. It seems difficult to think about going back to the well again, but this, this community has a reputation of taxation on an à la carte basis. If that's what the community would be willing to deal with again, I think we should, we should listen, we should hear. So again, my compliments to you, to every firefighter in your department, and please, let's see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the management update.
Our next item is the consent agenda.
And the agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city's website and on SGTV Channel 191. They need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next item is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Is there any council member wanting to give a verbal report of any, the boards or commissions there are? Councilor?
Yes. I'd like to have him come. So, do I speak it out loud? Okay.
Any others? Being none. We have several items here under appointments. Need a motion to approve, leaving room for exceptions, I guess. Are there any exceptions to any appointments? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next item is introduction of ordinances. We have a couple of them. The first one is to amend the official city map to vacate Baum Street between blocks 44 and 59 and extended north to the north right-of-way line of Tuscola Street, Hoyt's Platte in the city of Saginaw.
And I need a motion to introduce. It's been moved and supported. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Go ahead. This is for introduction, and it would be laid over for another council meeting to finalize. Any other questions? Any other questions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our second is an ordinance to amend the official city map to vacate the 500 block of South Fayette, lying between blocks 17 and 18 in the city of Saginaw, south of Cass Street.
Need a motion to introduce? Been moved and supported. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
We are now at consideration and passing of ordinances. We also have a couple of those. An ordinance to amend the official city map to rezone lots 11 through 20, block 7, Wadsworth Farm, city of Saginaw, from B1, local business, to B2, general business.
And need a motion? Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Second is an ordinance to amend the official city map to vacate the east 100 feet of the west 250 feet of an alley running east and west in the center of block 40, Saginaw Improvement Company's Edition I in the city of Saginaw.
Need a motion to adopt? Been moved and supported? Do we have support? Any further discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next item is resolutions. Resolution to adopt a mission statement, a vision statement, and core values for the city of Saginaw.
Need a motion to adopt? Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Second is a resolution to terminate Brownfield Plan Project Number 4, Garbco Inc., located at 620 South Washington Avenue.
Need a motion to adopt? Is there support? Been moved and supported. Now, is there any further discussion? Go ahead.
So what are we saying? We're going to discontinue this one? Is this one of the ones you were talking about?
Terminate the plan, and any tax, any taxes that have been captured would be returned to the taxing entities.
Plans to you guys to tell you about what you want to do with the property, or the taxes being kept up? Do you pay any taxes at all during this time, or what?
Place for outlining, outlining eligible activities under the plan. Taxes are captured, and if those eligible activities are performed by the developer, they'll be reimbursed upon the showing of proper documentation. When this plan originally went into place, this property was owned by Garbco, and Garbco was the applicant for putting that plan forward. Garbco has never supplied the city of Saginaw with any information or documentation with regard to any eligible activities occurring under the plan. In fact, Garbco no longer exists. They actually filed the certificate of dissolution for the corporation back in 2014. So at this point, the city has captured taxes that need to be returned to those taxing entities.
Where the information is simply no longer available, and even if we were to table this and allow for some more time, it can't be found, it doesn't exist.
At Co and the Kasabs for quite some time, at least a year if not longer, seeking that information, nothing's ever been provided to the city, to my knowledge. I don't know.
At this point, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has approved the termination or abolishment of this district based on the fact that we didn't have anything. And we, and Lori Brown and myself have met with the Kasabs, and the documentation is not sufficient enough to know that the property was transferred or the Brownfield was transferred to them. So at this point, we're kind of obligated to repay the taxing jurisdictions for money that was captured.
Who's expressed an interest in investing additional resources in the community? We've hit a brick wall. It just simply can't, there isn't anything we can do.
It's not, it's not designed to do that. It's designed for the rehab-type work, for buildings or properties. I'll also mention, though, that they, as I said before, there are a number of these that didn't get paid out, and it's, one, a financial issue when you look at our audit and you have money sitting on the books. This money is, belongs to Saginaw County, STARS, whatever other taxing authorities, including the city. So the taxes come in, and normally we redistribute those out. We keep this money, and the companies are supposed to submit, when they're doing the project, the proof of expenses, so then we pay them for that. That was never done on a number of these, and I think it's actually really good what Yolanda and Lori and Amy and other staff have been doing.
and Lori and Amy and other staff have been doing because they have made every allowance for most companies and a lot of these companies, they have worked with and have paid out a lot of that capture. US Graphite, I believe, is one and I think Cinderella Pools is another one where, I mean, they would, they've been going back 20 years or more, so they've been very, you know, I think generous with the time to do that.
Other taxing authorities.
Previously, but they, they've taken the time to try to work on this.
I guess that's what I'm asking. Just so I'm clear, so we're in heirs to other entities to an extent.
It's what a tax capture is, so. These Brownfields are actually, I believe, approved by the county as well because they're a large taxing entity along with the city and they, they approved the capture. I believe it says that in most of the Brownfield documents. And I think one of the only ones that we don't capture is school. Schools are exempt from it, but the other taxing entities are not. So any of those entities that you would see on your tax bill are, we hold that money for these projects.
And so we're not the only ones that's saying that, to an extent, that what's been provided to us is insufficient?
Well, we, we manage that portion of it and to my knowledge, and maybe we have and Lori may know since she's the assessor, but the other entities do have a claim on this money too since it's captured and it's not been paid out.
That's correct. We capture the entities. This one actually over-captured too. The eligible obligations were 61,500 and when Yolanda did the audit, there was 81,000 in the fund, so since there was no documentation of any expenses or receipts, we have the responsibility to return this money to the entities.
Who is getting this money?
STARS, the Delta College.
It was all.
Capture all entities except for school operating and debt millages. School operating can be captured with state approval, but this plan did not have any school taxes captured.
Just to echo what the staff personnel said, I happen to sit on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. It's been a subject of great discussion there and I think it's a good example of how our boards and commissions do the work. We've looked at this and, you know, to use the cliche, all the Ts have been crossed and the Is dotted here. We're accepting their work and, and in this resolution.
Motion is on the table. It's been seconded to approve. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item is motions and miscellaneous business.
Members, anything else to come before the council? Anything else to come before the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Been moved. Motion been made, moved. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed?
We're adjourned.